Good morning, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with our Human Resources meeting. Today's date is September 18, 2025. The time is 10:00 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Eberline, Duncan, and Matarri. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Anyone wish to speak? Hearing none. We will go into our first business item. Number one, clarification of record. Human Resources, it's a discussion item, and we have Dorothy Cross.
Dorothy Cross with Human Resources for the record. Sylvia asked that I simply have it on the record that HR did not recommend a policy to the assessor after the article came out in the newspaper. We just want it on the record. We did not at any time recommend that the assessor have a policy regarding candidacy for elected office.
Thank you. Any questions? Well, that was a quick one. Thank you. All right. On to item two. Request approval of new pay matrices, FY26, again with Human Resources and Ms. Dorothy Cross.
This should also be another really quick one. Brandy got the pay matrices put together. I fancied them up so that we can get them posted, but before we do that on our website, we need the approval from the board.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the new pay matrices for FY26.
Mark, you need to turn on your...
Second.
Commissioner Eberline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item three. This is a request approval of 9/21/25, COLA and longevity increases with Human Resources. And again, Ms. Dorothy Cross.
Yes, this is, I provided you with a list of every pay increase that will be effective on 9/21, and I need approval from the board since these will not go through on an SCF.
They will not go through on...
On a salary, on a salary change form.
Okay.
They will only go through on this spreadsheet.
Okay.
So we need your approval for them to be publicized, not publicized, but for the departments to talk to their employees about what their increases would be.
Sure.
I would also like clarification. If they're approved today, can I send these spreadsheets to the departments to start communicating, or do you want me to wait until I actually have the signature back?
The signature back from the board?
From the board.
Well, thoughts on that?
I, I think our verbal is fine, and...
Thank you.
You good with that, Mark?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any questions at all?
I'm just pointing out, I think the longevity pay came out to be more than was budgeted for by triple, but we, the rest of the pay increases, I think, were lower, so it, were covered. I think budget-wise, we're covered.
Yeah, I guess one of the questions is for the longevity pay, did that include people who were already receiving some form of longevity pay, or was that only the addition to what they were already receiving? Is there any clarification on that?
I haven't had time to review Dorothy's report since this morning. At a very brief glance, I think maybe it is including some people who were already slated to get longevity pay based on the 15, 20, and 25, but again, I haven't had time to review it in depth. So I know that that was something I looked at in detail with the sheriff's office at the time that I did my calculations, so.
And you got that report from?
It's a sequel report Dorothy created.
Okay. Can you...
And I believe the difference is looking at who was going to get longevity because of the change versus people who were already on longevity, and they're, they're moving because the longevity moved by five years. So it's a, it's a logical thing to have missed. So anybody who's going to longevity that never had it before showed up on Brandy's report.
Yes.
Yes. So, but there were people who were in a step twenty, or a step five on longevity 20, who change, or I'm sorry, who were on longevity 15, who now go to longevity 20 because of the shift. So there's some increases there.
So we don't know what the net difference is. What you provided was the gross amount who were on longevity, not the, the difference between who was already on longevity and the new amount that the county would be paying.
Right.
Okay, so we don't know what that is. So it may not have been three times the amount.
We do. I just went through, but Brandy hasn't had a chance to review it. So the difference, the unloaded budget amount is 73,840. The unloaded increase total came to
And we had talked about eighty-some thousand?
Eighty-seven would be loaded. Eighty-seven thousand is loaded.
And I didn't do loaded.
So the seventy-some thousand number you quoted was not loaded?
Exactly.
So it probably would be, you know, another 20-plus, 25,000, assuming a roughly 30% load rate?
Well, after Brandy gets us that information, you know, after she reviews it, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to point out again that we just have to be careful about what, not understanding the full impact of things. Again, we were lucky that the amount budgeted covers all of it. So, in the grand scheme of things.
But I think it's important to distinguish, because if, for some reason, making a change to longevity pay triples the cost, that's significant, and that's not a conversation the board has had. But if the difference, the delta between the existing longevity pay and the new one is right around where we budget it, then that should be no problem.
And it is.
Okay. Well, then we're good. Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the 9/21/25 COLA and longevity increases.
Second.
Commissioner Eberline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item four, review of open position report with Human Resources. And again, Ms. Dorothy Cross, you're busy today.
Actually, I would say I might have jumped the gun a little bit on this. I know that Sylvia used to present the open position report frequently. I think that kind of fell off the board. I know that Brandy, Brandy, I'm so sorry, Lexi reviewed it with you in June. I don't know if you want to go through it again, or if we're okay.
I, I think we're getting monthly updates. We just wanted to know monthly.
If you just want to just state for the record, you know, the percent vacancy, or, you know, just the total number, or something like that, that's fine.
Yeah, the total number is 79 total vacancies. There, when I made a comparison to last year, we're, we're pretty much the same. We're way down on, on vacancies for detention deputies. We still have 14 vacancies, but much lower than we were a year ago, so we're making progress. Attorneys, we're up with more vacancies on attorneys than we were a year ago, but I know Stan's been keeping you informed on that also. The only thing I had a question on, we have two jobs in transit showing vacant, and they've been showing vacant for more than a year. Do we still want those two jobs in transit to stay on the open position report, or should I freeze those two jobs?
I think it's a matter of we haven't approved new job descriptions, and so that's still in flux.
Okay.
Yeah. Does your report take into account people who are applicants that are in the pipeline to fill these positions?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, we did look at that. We have four in the pipeline right now that will be hired by the 6th of December. I can't speak today. The 6th of October, we will have four of these positions filled.
Let's say it's a long pipeline.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, by the 6th, we've made offers that have been accepted for four of these positions.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? No? Okay.
Do you want to do six and seven if you don't want to go into executive session for those? Or do you want to go into executive session?
Well, we can jump to six and seven. Mark, did you want to go into executive session on these, or we'll just kind of talk and then just play it by ear?
Play it by ear.
And then before we go into executive session, we will at least offer public comment. So we will go to item six, bonus payments request with the prosecuting attorney, and we have Stanley Mortensen.
Thank you, Stan Mortensen, for the record. The board may notice, I put some graphs in, in front of each member this morning. Those are updated from the graphs I previously submitted. The data is correct, but I couldn't get the, the colors to reflect the numbers, and so these are more accurate and reflective of current caseloads. But, long story short, board, my office is short-staffed. We're, we're short five attorneys throughout the office. My attorneys are doing more work than is expected of any one attorney. Quite frankly, they would be even if we were fully staffed, but it, it compounds the issue when we're, when we're understaffed. And it's not just that we're understaffed. We, we've lost several people over the last few months. And it's one thing to be understaffed and to have too many cases. We've kind of grown accustomed to that. But my office, we prosecute cases from beginning to end, so we take ownership of them. And when somebody quits, we have to reassign those cases midstream, and that's problematic. And, and my people are doing an excellent job with that on top of what they're already doing. And, and there's a trickle-down effect. When the attorneys are, are having to deal with this, so are the non-attorneys. And as the board knows, we have a vast amount of money in, in the budget for salary savings because we've had so many vacancies through this fiscal year. I'm just asking for a portion of it to go back to the employees in the form of retention bonuses, and it's according to their years of service. And so if, if the board wants more details on that, I'm happy to have a further discussion, but I, I think my request is pretty straightforward. In addition to that, that there is one employee that I would like to see, receive an additional increase for merit. In a short period of time, we hired a lot of people over the last year or two, and this, this attorney took on some supervisory and training duties that are just not in her job description. Arguably, it was, it was unfair of me to ask her to do this, but she did it, and she did it well. And so I would like to see her recognized for that effort.
And these are one-time?
These are one-time. They do not include myself, and they do not include my part-time or temporary employees.
Now, this item is not for that one employee that you're talking about?
It is.
Okay, it is?
It's two things into one. They're, it's all under the umbrella of bonus payments.
Oh, okay.
All of them but one are retention bonuses. The, the one is for a merit bonus.
All right. I just, out of curiosity, excuse me, in this chart, average juvenile cases received per attorney, you had over 800 in 2023. Does that mean your attorneys on average had over 800? Or was that just...
Let me pull up that chart. For some reason, I'm having trouble finding it. So there were eight, over 800 cases came into the office. In between the two attorneys, they handled those 800 cases.
Okay, because this is 800, it says per attorney. So I just wanted to make sure that you didn't have attorneys doing 800 cases on juvenile detention. I don't know if you want to look at this.
I do.
I do read these things. Conceptually, unless, does the board have any comments you want to share?
This used to be a common practice before, when the crunch of the labor crisis happened, and our wages hadn't caught up yet. So we took a lot of salary savings, I think it was for two or three years in a row, and we distributed amongst the people who were here.
Yeah.
Okay, if I could go back, didn't mean to cut.
Go ahead.
To correct my earlier statement, yes, in 2023, that's what we're talking about?
Yes.
In 2023, that is reflective of one attorney.
Okay.
So what, what happened is, prior to 2022, we had two attorneys doing juvenile cases. One of them retired, and that attorney was never replaced. So one attorney in 2022 and 2023 was doing all the work.
Yeah.
So for those two years, that one attorney did handle all those cases. In 2024, we went back to two attorneys. So this is reflective of per attorney per year.
Okay.
But that's the explanation why those two years are extremely high. It's because we were operating with half the staff.
Got it.
You can see what difference it makes when you have two attorneys doing that work.
Yeah, and that actually leads to what I want to say to you. First one is, I, I'm fine with your proposal, your office. Your, obviously, the workload doesn't disappear when a staff member resigns. That workload gets spread among the remaining staff members. But I would propose that with such a high difference between average and the actual workload, that you come back to the board with a, a chart of staff that gets you to a, you know, a caseload per attorney, that doesn't make it a crisis when one or two people resign. You have enough people where you're always going to have turnover?
Certainly.
And I would argue that some of your turnover is a career progression outside of the office, not necessarily career, a lack of career progression in your office, and...
It's a combination, but yeah, that, those things do happen. Some of my attorneys make judge, and...
And that's, that's a, probably a personal ambition as opposed to a, you know?
True.
I, I want to stay in this office and do the work, but you, your office doesn't pay enough to keep me, and that's why I'm leaving. But I think coming back with something that says, this is where I really need to be so that we're in a good shape, and then we can do a financial, a financial cost assessment to that, looking at the caseload per attorney model. Because I think at some point, when you start to have so many cases, the quality of your ability to prosecute starts to go down.
It could. I can tell the board that I'm short four criminal attorneys right now. Even if we were fully staffed, we would be in the red. I've looked at those numbers. It would take me filling those four positions and hiring at least two, maybe three more attorneys before we could get into the blue, so to speak. And that's looking at public defender recommended caseloads. Arguably, we should be lower than that, but for the sake of argument, if we just want to match public defender caseloads, we would, I would need to fill my four vacancies, and then I would need two or three more attorneys. I, I can't go before the board and ask for more attorneys when I can't fill the positions I have. So that's what I've been waiting for. What I'd like to do is get fully staffed, go three to six months of being fully staffed before I can say, hey, maybe we fixed the problem. Then I come before the board and ask for one or two attorneys per year for a couple of years in a row, so we can get those caseloads under control. But that, that's what we're looking at. It's, I need to fill my four vacant positions. I've done the numbers. I need another two, maybe three attorneys
Yeah.
to get to an appropriate caseload size.
And for the benefit of Commissioner Eberline, before your time, the prosecuting attorney has been playing catch-up pretty much since day one, trying to plug holes because people, you know, there's a normal turnover. But the caseload, I think, is so high that that actually is, could become a factor for some of the people who choose to move on, because it's so high.
I had one leave last month. He took a pay raise, not much, but he took a pay raise, but he took a 60% reduction in caseload to go to a different prosecutor's office. And he told me that a reduction in caseload for him was more important than the small raise he got.
Quality of life.
So Stan, I have a question. When you mentioned caseloads for public defense, that's not actually, actual caseloads. That is the number that they would like to get to as well?
The public defenders?
Yes.
I don't know how they calculated their numbers, but they have national recommended caseload sizes.
Right, so that's a recommendation. It's not what they're actually happening, because we still have severe...
Yes, it's recommended.
Yeah.
Those are the nationally recommend, recommended caseloads for public defenders.
Yeah, so right now, public defense probably has your same amount of caseloads, or possibly even more because they're...
It depends. I mean, there's private attorneys that take some of those away from public defenders. There's different calculations, but all the cases have to go through my office. Not all cases go through a public defender's office.
Right, but we...
My office also has the burden of proof.
Sure. I'm not arguing that with you. I'm just saying that I don't want the audience to believe that public defense has low caseloads right now.
I would never say that. I, I couldn't say that. I don't know. But I, I would venture to say they have too many cases per attorney as well. They did when it was a county system.
Yeah, well, this is a recommendation. So I would propose that you come back with some, a little bit, the ability to do a little bit of sensitivity analysis. If you had this many, here's where the number of cases would be. If you had this many plus an additional one, here's where it is. And then also, just look at what would it take to achieve that goal? You know, you set the objective, and then what does it cost to achieve that goal?
I'm actually in the process of doing that right now.
Okay. All right. Well, if, unless anyone has anything else to say about this, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the bonus payment request per, with the prosecuting attorney.
Second.
Commissioner Eberline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, item seven. This is a bonus payment, payments request for 911. It's an action item, and we have Lieutenant Howard from our sheriff's office.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Sorry, I thought you left it on. Good morning. Here just asking to continue the current bonuses that our dispatch staff is receiving, and asking for an increase in that bonus. As you know, we're currently working, the dispatchers are currently working 60-hour work weeks. We have limited the amount of vacation and canceled all trainings. So they're working in an 80-hour paycheck. They're getting 40 hours overtime. Every paycheck, their quality of life has been degraded to a point where I keep getting told that the money that, the bonuses that they're currently receiving is not equal to the lack of time with their family and the ability to rest and take care of the necessities at home, which is why I'm asking for the increase. We do have quite a bit in salary savings with the 10 vacancies that we have. That is more than enough to cover our, the bonus request as well as the overtime that we're projecting.
Questions? Just a couple of things. You know, like the prosecuting attorney said, that, you know, there's a quality of life issue. Money wears off at some point. So this, to me, is like a temporary Band-Aid. I know you have people who are in the pipeline, I would suppose, who, who can provide that relief. But I also would look at, one, and I am a little bit perplexed because we gave the, the raise for the 911 before to equal Spokane, so that at least we could, you know, take some of that market. You know, I think we got some of that back.
We did, yeah.
Yeah. But after giving that money, we're still kind of in what seems to be a little bit of a crisis mode, and so I have to ask, what, what are we missing here? And I'm not looking for an answer. It's a rhetorical question. You know, what are we missing? Because money does not seem to have fixed our problem like it should have.
Well, I would disagree with you a little bit, because I do think that it has fixed it right now. I think we're seeing the fruit of that, is, but it's just beginning. The problem is that now it takes time. So we have five people in a training program. I have another one starting on the 29th. I've been told that I have another one that should be hired within a couple of weeks after that. And then additional in backgrounds right now. So I only have three trainers for potentially eight trainees. So it's going to take time for us to get them through that. And not only are we training them, but in order to train them and maintain minimum staffing, I have one trainer training two people while also operating a radio channel. It's extremely taxing for a 12-hour shift, and a lot of times it's taking them beyond that 12 hours just so they can finish the paperwork required for their training day and then prepare for the next one. So I do think that the raises have helped. I think the bonuses have helped. But fixing the problem is creating a problem, if that makes sense.
So the bottleneck is no longer pay. The bottleneck is now training?
Right now, yes. But I do want to warn you that with Spokane City and Spokane County separating their dispatch centers, there's now bidding war for dispatchers in the area. So I just want to give you the heads up that we're going to have to have that discussion again, because we may have matched them, but within a year, we're going to be far behind them in pay.
Okay, so, so the training component is your bottleneck?
Right now, yes.
So is there a place you can go to, to get additional trainers? Like, we hired, we hired contractors to, to provide some relief for the existing dispatchers. Is there, you know, if that's the bottleneck, how can we fix that?
I do have, I've got it on the agenda for next week's business meeting, I believe, for some programs that's going to help us with training. It's some AI-based training that will allow trainees to actually take calls. They're not live calls, but they can actually speak to the program, and then it gives them a printout of what they need to work on. So I'm hoping that that will cut down a lot of the burden on our trainers as well as increase the speed for getting people through training. But I plan on bringing that to you next week.
Okay. And how long do you think we'll need to have these enhanced bonuses? Do you have a, a projection on that?
Well, once these five get out, the training program, late spring, I'm hoping by next summer that we would be able to have a serious conversation about reducing all of, all of these bonuses.
So if we were to approve this for 12 months?
I, I feel like that would be enough.
Yeah.
As long as everything continues down the path that it's going. As long as everything continues down the path that it's going.
Yeah, my, I don't have a problem, you know, throwing some additional money, you know, to help this. My fear is that that may not be the, the optimal solution for your problem. And two, we just don't want you to be in a situation where if you lose a trainer or two, right, you're, you're in really bad, you know, hot water.
Yes, yeah.
And so there needs to be a contingency and essence for what do you do if someone just says, I'm done, you know?
Right now, we're on, it's being held together by a thread. And luckily, my trainers are very dedicated. They understand, we've had many conversations about what it's going to take over the next eight to nine months to get them through, to get these trainees through. They're committed, they're willing, and, but they are taxed. At the end of the day, you can see there's not much left in them.
Yeah. Does anyone have any thoughts on this? Because...
I, I think that they're doing, thinking outside the box with doing this additional training. I think that Lieutenant Howard's been on top of it and making sure that everybody there feels appreciated and kind of going outside the box and trying to provide everything that he can outside of reducing work hours.
Yeah, well, I, I would consider, not saying do this, but I would consider getting these contractors back if you're going to have quality of life issues. Because I know for some people, and it should be this way, you know, missing out on their kids growing up because they're so busy, I don't know if you can put a price on that. I don't know if there's a bonus that you could offer that would make someone say, I'm, I'm going to miss these things.
No, I would agree with you there. The, the issue with the contractors is that they require training. So I haven't yet found a traveling dispatch program that has dispatchers who are fully trained in all of the systems we have. And even then, if they are, we have to train them on our policies and procedures.
But we had some, though, didn't we?
And it didn't work out.
It did not. I, I came into this position at the tail end of that, and even then, there was one dispatcher who was able to work one law channel.
Yeah.
So, and everybody else would come in, they would spend two, three weeks getting trained on our system, and then it was time for them to leave, and then they would send another dispatcher. So it was this perpetual training.
So they were short-term?
Yeah. It created a lot more problems than it actually helped.
Ah. All right, well, my gut tells me that, that thread is very thin for you.
Trust me, I feel it.
Now, the rest of us, we understand that, because we all sit under the sword of Damocles, which is held by the horsehair, but, but we don't want that to happen in our 911.
Agreed.
So, okay, all right. Take a motion unless there's anyone who has any other thoughts.
I move that...
Well, I just had a question. There's two options here, right? For the $240,000 and the $312,000? Or are you wanting both of those approved?
The 312 is what I was asking for.
Okay.
The 240 was the old one.
Okay.
I just wanted to give options as to what it was.
Okay.
Prior to this past fiscal year, and then the 312 is what I was...
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that it's the 312,000.
Not both, right.
Okay.
Let me, that we approve the bonus payments for 911.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlin?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have item five, which is an executive session. So I'm going to move that we go in or ask for public comment. Would anyone like to speak? Anybody on the telephone? Okay, I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
I move that we enter into executive session per suit of Idaho Code 742061B.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlin?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye.
Okay, it's eleven oh eight. I'll take a motion to exit executive session.
I move that we exit executive session and approve the reclassification of the job description update with the former language of reporting to the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
Commissioner Aberline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Rotari?
Aye. Motion carries. We've already done public comment. Eleven oh eight, meeting adjourned.